Hey beautiful souls, it's your girl LaVette Tia and I am so, so, so excited to introduce to you my new series, Learning with Love. Now if you're new here, I am the host of the podcast LaVette Tia Experience. And I got my, I guess, virality or traction on social media because I was very transparent and honest about things that I was learning about sexually. Uh, and that helped me kinda create a community of other curious or sexually curious minds and people. So, I decided to start this new series because I have launched or am launching, it, it's kind of a catch 22, right? I've launched it. It's called the Ethereal Pleasure Academy, but the actual academy is not officially out there yet. So while waiting for the academy to be built, uh, I decided to start studying on my own. Now, I just found out that there is this major, major, major organization that usually certifies sexologists. Uh, and I just found out that one, they don't allow you to get a certification from them if you've ever participated in any form of sex work. Which to me is quite literally insane. I'm trying to figure out if I really wanna like say what the name is. I don't know. Like what's the worst that can happen? I'm not gonna get accepted into it anyway. Um, but before I found that out, I actually couldn't do it because they wanted you to have a masters in order to be able to get your sexology degree from them. Like, come on, you gotta, you gotta give us something. So anyways, I decided in the meantime, while I'm looking for a proper institution to be able to study sexology, man, I am going to learn myself. Now, a while ago, I did a partnership with Sodor, also known as shopSodor.com. And I would send all of these amazing books, this book being one of them. So if you see any of these books that I am reading, you can definitely treat yourself to one at shopSodor.com. They have absolutely amazing prices and I have learned so much already. So today's study session is going to be Come As You Are. That's the book we're gonna be reading. And if you know me, you know that I will never, ever, ever claim to be an expert. I think that there are new things always happening and coming up in the world of sex and pleasure. So you can kind of only be an expert to a certain extent because new stuff is always popping up. You just have to keep reeducating yourself. Uh, also, one last tidbit is I was homeschooled slash unschooled. So studying, like a creating curriculums around things that I'm interested in, AKA interest-based learning, is my thing. So I'm super excited about that. If you're curious about that, you can check out me and my mom's YouTube channel. It's Tracy and LaVette Tia. Alright, so today we are going to be studying from Come As You Are. Again, this is from ShopSodor. And I've read a bit of it already. I low-key wanna start over. I low-key wanna start over. Cause I feel like I learned so much, but I don't really think that it like stayed in my mind. Like they talk about intersex. Yeah, I feel like we should probably start from basics. So let's just do that. Alright. So let me just skip past some of this stuff. Chapter one. Introduction. Yes, you are normal. To be a sex educator is to be asked questions. I stood in college dining halls with a plate of food in my hands answering questions about orgasm. I've been stopped in hotel lobbies at professional conferences to answer questions about vibrators. I've sat on a park bench checking social media on my phone only to find questions from a stranger about her asymmetrical genitals. I've gotten emails from students, from friends, from their friends, from total strangers, and about sexual desire, sexual arousal, sexual pleasure, sexual pain, orgasm, fetishes, fantasies, body foods, and more. Questions like, once my partner initiates, I'm into it. But it seems like it never even occurs to me to be the one to start things. Why is that? Another one is, my boyfriend was like, you're not ready, you're still dry. But I was so ready. Why wasn't I wet? I saw this thing about women who can't enjoy sex because they worry about their bodies the whole time. That's me. How do I stop doing that? Another one says, I read something about women who stop wanting sex after a while in a relationship, even if they still love their partner. That's me. How do I start wanting sex with my partner again? I think, I think maybe I peed when I had an orgasm. And I think maybe I've never had an orgasm. Under all these questions, there's really one question. Am I normal? The answer is nearly always yes. This book is a collection of answers. They're answers that I've seen change women's lives, answers informed by the most relevant science and by the personal stories of women whose growing understanding of sex has transformed their relationships from their own bodies. These women are my heroines. And I hope that by telling their story, I'll empower you to follow your own path, to reach for and achieve your own profound and unique sexual potential. Before I even like continue this book, I just love this so much because I do get a lot of emails, like always asking questions, asking for advice. Um, definitely very transparent things, uh, that people ask me. And I love this, that this study session that we're doing cause I feel like I'm gonna be able to answer a lot of those questions. I don't always have time to be able to like check my email and read the full messages and then respond thoughtfully. And you know what really grinds my gears? When I do take the time to do that and I respond thoughtfully and the person doesn't reply. Or they just liked the message. Are you kidding me? I couldn't even get a thank you. So yeah, that's, that's when I stopped doing that shit for free. Um, and now you gotta set up a consultation, but I'm grateful for this too. That I understand that everybody has the funds for a consultation. Also, the Ethereal Pleasure Academy, I have the goal to launch that before the year is over. That is the ultimate goal. Uh, but I also wanna launch it when it's like perfected, when it's highly incubated. And not perfected to the point of like, oh, I'm perfectionist, so I'm never gonna launch it. But I just want it to be easy to use. That's, that's the goal. And what the academy is, is literally, it's a safe space for the sexually curious. Uh, so you can go on there and you can learn about anything in any form of way. I, being unschooled, I learned that there are so many different ways that people learn, whether that's like hands-on, whether that's visually, whether that's audibly. So yeah, all of that good stuff, whether it's reading or watching videos. People learn in all different ways. So I would like to have an academy, or I am going to have an academy that allows people to learn in whatever way works for them. Um, and it'll be highly inclusive and filled with love and filled with safety and community. So I'm super excited about that. Now, let's get back to this. I'm gonna stop after we get to chapter two, just to give y'all an idea of how many pages that is. I, what the fuck? I really, okay, well, we're gonna finish the introduction cause that's about to be done real quick. And then I wanna do the part about genitals. It's literally right here. Okay, I should've, I should've passed the introduction, but whatever. This is good stuff too. The true story of sex. After all the books that have been written about sex, all the podcasts and TV shows and magazines, articles and video Q and As, how can it be that we still have so many questions? Well, the frustrating reality is we've been lied to. Not deliberately. It's no one's fault, but still. I feel like it's, it's the patriarchy's fault, but okay. We were told the wrong story. For a long, long time in Western science and medicine, women's sexuality was viewed as men's sexuality, like basically the same, but not quite as good. For instance, it was just sort of assumed that since men have orgasms during penis-in-vagina sex intercourse, women have orgasms with intercourse too. But if they don't, it's because they're broken. In reality, about a quarter of women orgasm reliably with intercourse. The other seventy-five percent sometimes rarely or never orgasm with intercourse. And they're all healthy and normal. A woman might orgasm lots of other ways, manual sex, oral sex, vibrators, breast stimulation, toe sucking, pretty much any way you can imagine, but still not orgasms on intercourse. That's normal. It's also just assumed too, that because men's genitals typically behave in their minds, because men's genitals typ- typically behave the way their minds are behaving, if a penis is erect, the person attached to it is feeling turned on. A woman's genitals should also match her emotional experience. And again, some women do, many don't. A woman can be perfectly normal and healthy and experience arousal non-concordance? Non-concordance? Did I say that right? Uh, where the behavior of her genitals being wet or dry may not match her mental experience, feeling turned on or not. And it was also assumed that because men experience spontaneous out of the blue desire for sex, women should also want sex spontaneously. Again, it turns out that that's true, sometimes, but not necessarily. A woman can be perfectly normal and healthy and never experience spontaneous sexual desire. Instead, she may experience responsive desire, in which her desire emerges only in a highly erotic context. That's the. In reality, women and men are different. But wait, women and men both experience orgasm, desire, and arousal. And men too can experience responsive desire, arousal, non-concordance? Non-concordance? Why does that feel not like that's not right? Okay. Non-concordance. I lost my spot. And lack of orgasm with penetration. Women and men both fall in love, fantasize, masturbate, feel puzzled about sex, and experience ecstatic pleasure. They both can ooze fluids, travel forbidden paths of sexual imagination, encounter the unexpected in startling ways that sex shows up in every domain of life, and confront the unexpected and startling ways that sex sometimes declines politely or otherwise to show up. So are women and men really that different? The problem here is that we've been taught to think about sex in terms of behavior, rather than in terms of biology, psychology, and other social processes underlying the behavior. We think about our psychological behavior, blood flow, and genital secretions and heart rate. We think about our social behavior, what we do in bed, whom we do it with, and how often. A lot of books about sex focus on these things. They tell you how many times per week the average couple has sex, or they offer instructions on how to have an orgasm, and that can be helpful. But if you really want to understand human sexuality, behavior alone won't get you there. Trying to understand sex by looking at behaviors like trying to understand love by looking at a couple's portrait and their divorce papers. Being able to describe what happened. Two people got married and then got divorced. Doesn't get us very far. What we need to know is why and how it came to be. Exactly. And I've been telling y'all, I wanna get to the root cause. Did our couple fall out of love after they got married and that's why they divorced? Or were they never in love, but were forced to marry and finally became free when they divorced? Without better evidence, we're mostly guessing. Until very recently, that's how it's been for sex. Mostly guessing. But we're at a pivotal moment in sex science because after decades of researching describing what happens in human sexual response, we're finally figuring out why and how. The process underlying the behavior. In the last decade of the twentieth century, researchers Eric Jensen and John Bancroft of the Kinsley Institute for Research in Sex, Gender, Reproduction Development, a model of human sexual response that provides an organization, an organizing principle for understanding the true story of sex, according to their dual-control model. The sexual response mechanism in our brains. Y'all, I, why, I just felt you saying just a lot of words. I'm trying to hang in there. Um, like I did what she's saying, but I feel like I should've just read this and paraphrased. But if this is your thing, then great. Um, there are like more visual, like see, I'm more of a visual person. Like show me the pictures. Um, so I feel like I'm just saying words right now, but I'm also, I am digesting it. But I just want to be like very fucking transparent about this cause I have ADHD. I'm very neurodivergent. So like I'm trying so hard to focus right now. So if thing that I can relate to that, then great. Alright. Uh, the result is, wait. Oops. Kinsley Institute, dual control. Okay, let's go back to the part, uh, true story of sex. According to their dual motor control, the sexual response mechanism in our brain consists of a pair of universal components, a sexual accelerator and sexual brake. And those components respond to broad categories of sexual stimuli, including genital sensations, visual stimulations, and emotional context. And the sensitivity of each component varies from person to person. The result, that is sexual arousal, desire, and orgasm are merely universal experiences. But when, when and how we experience them depends largely on our sensitivities of our brakes and accelerators and on the kinds of stimulations they're given. Did y'all hear that? This is the mechanism underlying the behavior, the why and the how, and the rule that governs the story I'll be telling in this book. We're all made of the same parts, but in each of us, these parts are organized in a unique way that may change over our lifespan. No organization is better or worse than any other, and no phase in our lifespan is better or worse than any other. They're just different. An apple tree can be healthy no matter what variety of apple it is. Though one variety may need constant direct sunlight and another might enjoy some shade. And an apple tree can be healthy when it's a seed, when it's a seedling, as it's growing, and as it fades at the end of the season, as well as when in the late summer it is laden with fruit. But it has different needs in each of those phases in its life. You too are healthy and normal at the start of your sexual development as you grow and as you bear the fruits of living with confidence and the joy inside your body. You are healthy when you need lots of sun, and you're healthy when you enjoy some shade. That's the true story. We are all the same. We are all different. We are all normal. Alright, let's see. Alright, I'm going to read one, two, three, four. Four more pages. This book is divided into four parts. The not-so-basic basics, uh, sex in context, sex in action, and ecstasy for everybody. The three chapters in the first part describe the basic hardware you were born with, a body, a brain, and a context. In chapter one, I talk about genitals, their parts, the meaning we impose on these parts, and the science that proves definitively that yes, your genitals are perfectly healthy and beautiful just as they are. Chapter two details the sexual response mechanism in the brain, the dual-control motor of inhibition and excite, excitation, or brakes and accelerators. Then in chapter three, I introduce the ways that your sexual brakes and accelerators interact with many other symptoms in your brain and environment, to shape whether a particular sensation or a person turns you on right now in this book. And the second part of the book, Sex in Context, we will talk about how all the basic hardware is functioning within the reality of your actual life, your emotions, your relationship, your, your feelings about your body. By the way, I'm reading this cause I want y'all to know like what we're gonna be studying in these next couple of study sessions. And I'm gonna be going from book to book. So it's not always going to be the specific book, but I will put it in either the caption or the subject, whatever this is called, the title, or the description to let y'all know exactly what we're gonna be reading for that day. So there's just like a little prefix of what to expect. And your attitudes towards sex. Chapter four focuses on two primarily emotional systems, love and stress, and the surprising and contradictory ways they can influence your sexual responsiveness. Then chapter five describes the cultural forces that shape and constrain sexual functioning and how you can minimize the good things about this process and overcome the destructive things. What we'll learn in this is that context, your external circumstances and your present mental state is as crucial to your sexual well-being as your body and brain. Master the context in these chapters and your sexual life will transform, along with quite possibly the rest of your life. The third part of the book, Sex in Action, is about sexual response itself. And I bust two longstanding and dangerous myths. Chapter six lays out the evidence that sexual pleasure and desire may or may not have anything to do with what's happening in your genitals. This is where and why we learn. Uh, this is where we learn why arousal non-concordance, which is mentioned earlier, is normal and healthy. And after you read chapter seven, you will never hear someone say sex drive without thinking to yourself, ah, but sex is not a drive. In this chapter, I explain how responsive desire works. If you or your partner have experienced a change in your interest in sex, increase or decrease this is an important chapter for you. And in the fourth part of the book, Ecstasy for Everyone, explains how to make sex entirely yours, which is how you create peak sexual ecstasy in your life. Chapter eight is all about orgasms, what they are, what they are not, how to have them and how to make them like the ones you read about, the ones that turn the stars into rainbows. And finally, in chapter nine, I describe the first most interesting, the single most interesting thing you can do to improve your sex life. But I'll give it away right now. It turns out what matters most is not the parts you were made of or how they're organized, but you, how you feel about those parts. When you embrace your sexuality precisely as it is right now, that's the context that creates a greater potential for ecstatic pleasure. Several chapters include worksheets or other interactive activities and exercises. A lot of these are fun. Like in chapter three, I asked you to think about times that you've had great sex and identify what aspects of context helped to make that sex great. All of the exercises turn, all of the exercises turn the science into something prac- practical that can genuinely transform your sex life. Throughout the book, you'll follow stories of four women, Olivia, Merrick, Camilla, and Lori. These women don't exist as individuals. They're composites into creating the real stories of the many women I've talked, talked with, emailed, and supported in my two decades as a sex educator. You can imagine each woman as a collage of snapshots, the face from one photograph, the arms from another, the feet from the third. Each part represents someone real and the collection hangs together meaningfully. But I've invented the relationships that the parts have to each other. I've chosen to construct these composites rather than, okay, blah, blah, blah. And finally, at the end of the chapter, you'll find, uh, too-long-don't-read, list too-long-didn't-read, uh, the blunt internet abbreviation that means just get to the point. Ain't that why I skipped that last, that last part? Um, if you wanted to read that little last paragraph, I skipped it. You can hit shopSodor.com. Uh, each TLDR list briefly summarizes the four most important messages in the chapter. If you find yourself thinking, my friend Alice should really read this chapter, or I really wish my partner knew this, you might start by showing them that list. Or if you'd like me, if you're like me and get too excited about these ideas, keep them to yourself, you can follow your partner around the house, reading the long, reading the list out loud and saying, see honey, arousal non-concordance is a thing. And it turns out I have responsive desire, or you give great context to me. Um, let's see. Okay, yes, I think this part is important. A couple of caveats. First, there are times when I discuss what trans-sex educator S. Bear Bergman calls factory-installed parts. The anatomical details that make doctors declare a baby a boy or a girl. For clarity and simplicity, when I'm talking about those parts, I'll use the words female and male, referring to biological categories that can describe many sexual reprodu- reproducing species, not just humans. When I'm talking about a whole person, I'll use the words woman and man, referring to a person's identity and role. A further gender caveat, because this book is grounded in the existing science, most of the time when I say woman in this book, I mean cisgendered women. That is, people who were born in bodies that made the adults around them declare it's a girl. And then were raised as girls and now feel comfortable in the social role and psychological identity of women. There are plenty of women who don't have one or more of these characteristics, and there are plenty of people who don't identify as women who do fit more one of these, more than one of these, more, one or more of these characteristics. Trans and non-binary people deserve excellent science-based, pleasure-oriented sex education too. And there is still, still so little research on trans-sexual functioning for me to say with certainty whether that's true about, whether what's true about cisgendered women's sexual well-being is also true for trans folks. I think it probably is. And as more research emerges over the coming decades, we'll find out. I'm totally sure that people of any gender, including cisgender men, can learn a lot from the existing science, incomplete though it is. But while we wait for more and better research, I want to acknowledge that this book relies on science that is almost entirely based on cisgender people. That's such a shame. Third, I am passionate about liberal. It's a shame that there's not more research done for trans bodies and trans people. Third, I am passionate about the role of science in promoting women's sexual well-being. And I have worked hard in this book to encapsulate the research in the service of teaching women to live with their confidence and joy inside their bodies. But I've been very intentional about the empirical details I've included or excluded. I ask myself, does this fact help women have better sex lives, which is totally fascinating and important empirical puzzle? And I cut the puzzles. I kept only the science that has the most immediate relevance in women's everyday life. So which, so what you'll find is these pages, in these pages, isn't the whole story of women's sexuality. I'm not sure what the whole story would actually, I'm not sure that the whole story would actually fit in one book. Instead, I've included the parts of the story that I found most powerful in my work as a sex educator, promoting women's sexual well-being, anatomy, and pleasure. The purpose of this book is to offer a new science-based way of thinking about women's sexual well-being, like all new ways of thinking. It opens up a lot of questions and challenges, much pre-existing knowledge. If you wanna deep dive, you'll find references in the notes along with details about my process for boiling down a complex and multifaceted body of research. Now my alarm just went off and interrupted me. God damn, okay, I'm wrapping it. Oh, I thought I was wrapping it up. Y'all, I'm like, this is so important though, but like my ADHD mind is tired. You know what I'm saying? Like, I, I can't manage it. If you're not hating it, I can do for you to come back. I promise it won't always be like this. It's just whenever I read introductions to books, they are literally always this dull. And it's no shade to the, the author, Emily Nagoski. If I ever meet you, just know that your book is not boring. It's just my ADHD will never let me focus during introductions. Like I just need to get to the, get to the facts, get to the information. Although I have learned a lot in this so far. Like what I learned was that trans, um, people deserve to have more research done on, well, consensual research done on their sexual health and sexual wellness. I've learned that we have accelerators and brakes that, um, contribute or remove from our arousal. And I've learned that we need to get to the root cause. Even though I knew this, I'm very passionate about that, but I'm happy that she emphasized it. Alright, we're gonna wrap this up. Last couple of pages. If you feel broken or know someone who does, one more thing before we jump into chapter one. Remember how I said we've all been lied to? I wanna take a moment to recognize the damage done by that lie. So many women come to my workshop or to my class or to my public talks convinced that they are sexually broken. They feel dysfunctional, abnormal. And on top of that, they feel anxious, frustrated, and hopeless about the lack of information and support they've received from medical professionals, therapists, partners, family, and friends. Just relax, they've been told. Have a glass of wine. Or women don't just want sex that much. Get over it. Or sometimes sex hurts. Can't you just ignore it? I understand the frustration these women experience and the despair. And in the second half of this book, I talk about the neurological process that traps people in frustration and despair, shutting them off from hope and joy. And I described the science-based ways to get out of that trap. Here's what I need you to know right now. The information that this book will show you, this is, the information in this book will show you that whatever you're experiencing in sexuality, whether it's challenges with arousal, desire, orgasm, pain, no sensual sensations, whatever, it is a result of your sexual response mechanisms functioning appropriately in an inappropriate world. You are normal. It is the world around you that's broken. That's actually the bad news. The good news is that when you understand how your sexual response mechanism works, you can begin to take control of your environment and your brain in order to maximize your sexual potential, even in a broken world. And when you change your environment and your brain, you can change and heal your sexual functioning. This book contains information that I have seen transform women's well-being. I've seen it transform men's understanding of their women's partners, women partners. I've seen same-sex couples with each other and say, oh, so that's what's been going on. Students, friends, blog readers, and even fellow sex educators have read this book and heard me give a talk and said, why didn't no one tell me this before? It explains everything. I know for sure that I've written this book, that what I've written in this book can help you. It may not be enough to heal all the wounds inflicted in your sexuality by a culture in which it sometimes feels nearly impossible for women to do sexuality, right? But it will, to do sexuality, right? But it will provide powerful tools and support of your healing. How do I know? Evidence, of course. And at the end of one semester, I asked my one hundred and eighty-seven students to write down one really important thing they learned in my class. Here's a sample of what they wrote. I am normal. I am normal. I am normal. I learned that everything is normal, making it possible to go through the rest of my life with confidence and joy. I learned that I am normal. I learned that some people have spontaneous desire and others have responsive desires. And this fact helped me totally understand my personal life. Women vary, and just because I could not experience my sexuality in the same way many other women do, that does not make me abnormal. Women's sexual desires, arousal, response, etc., is incredibly varied. Uh, the one thing I can count on regarding sexuality is that people vary a lot. Um, that everyone is different, that everything is normal, no two alike, no two alike. And many more. More than half of them wrote some version of I am normal. I sad my office and read these responses with tears in my eyes. There was something urgently important to my students about feeling normal, and somehow my class had cleared the path to that feeling. The science of women's sexuality being in, well, the science of women's sexual well-being in young. I'm sorry, y'all. We're, 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 look, this is about to end, okay? We're almost fucking done. Cause like I had to start this series cause I already knew that I was not gonna study if I didn't hold myself accountable. So this is really more for me than it's for you, but I hope that you're truly enjoying it. Cause shit. The science of women's sexual well-being is young, and there is much still to be learned. But this science, that this young science has already discovered truth about women's sexuality that has transformed my students' relationships with their bodies, and it certainly transformed mine. I wrote this book to share the science, stories, and sex-positive insights that prove to us despite our culture vested, interested in making us feel broken, dysfunctional, and lovely and unlovable, that we are in fact fully capable of confident and joyful. That we are fully capable of confident, joyful sex. The promise of Come As You Are is this. Bless paragraph. No matter where you are in your sexual journey right now, whether you have had an awesome sex life or want to expand the awesomeness, or you're struggling and wanna find solutions, you will find, you will learn something that will improve your sex life and transform the way you understand what it means to be a sexual being. And you'll discover that even if you don't yet feel that way, you are, you are already sexually whole and healthy. The science says so. I can prove it. We finished our first study chapter, y'all, or study session, Learn with Love, whatever the hell you wanna call it. Wow, I love that so much. Um, now let's go hang on Patreon, cause I have so many fun things happening on there. Uh, less studying and more just me catching up on my life in the interim of the podcast. And just so you know, the next part we're going to be focusing on is the not-so-basics. And, and we get to anatomy. And this is the part where I wanted to get to y'all, where we talk about how men and women are literally born with the same thing in the beginning. I remember when I read that last time. Literally, we all basically start off with a clit and then it grows. It's crazy. So, Come As You Are, you can find it on shopSodor.com. And if you're interested in learning more about the Ethereal Pleasure Academy and our launch, then you can head to loveatia.com, go to the Ethereal Pleasure Academy, scroll down, and then sign up right on that little signup thing for updates. And feel free to subscribe to me here on YouTube to learn more about, uh, pleasure, to learn pleasure tips, to get updates about the academy, and to continue these study sessions will be, y'all, I've commented. They will not all be introductions. We will get down to nitty-gritty, but I do feel like I learned a lot, um, from this first part. And the main, main, main message of the day is, I am normal. You are normal. Nothing's wrong with you. Nothing's broken within you. You are normal. You are normal. And we're going to learn more about that in this book. So stay tuned for the next episode of Learning with Love. I love you.